Thank you. Good morning. The time is now 9:39 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting, September 8th, 2020, is called to order due to the COVID-19 national emergency and in accordance with Executive Director 2020-2, an executive order 2020-154, the State Board of Education Regular and Committee of the whole meeting is being convened with remote access technology. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, could I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor? Marilyn, could you do a roll call vote, please?
I will. Um, Fecto.
Here.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
You? Ramos Montini is currently absent. Snyder? Nikki, are you there? Okay, she may have stepped away. I will mark her absent during this vote. And Cassandra Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Marilyn. At this time, Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Happy to do so. With us today, we have Dr. Cassandra Albridge. She's the President of the Board from Dearborn. Dr. Pamela Pugh is the Board's Vice President from Saginaw. Ms. Michelle Fecto, Secretary from Detroit. Mr. Tom McMillan, Treasurer from Oakland Township. Ms. Tiffany Tilly is the Board's Association Delegate. She's from Southfield. She's unable to join us today. Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini is Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee from Grand Rapids. She is on her way to joining us. Dr. Judy Pritchett, Co-Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee from Wall Street Township is with us. Ms. Nikki Snyder, State Board Legislative Committee Member from Dexter, with us. Ms. Brandy Johnson, the Governor's Policy Advisor for Education and Workforce, is with us today. And this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, Mr. Owen Bondano. When he's not at the board meeting, he's an English Language Arts teacher at the Oak Park Freshman Institute, which is part of Oak Park Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. First item on the agenda is educational updates related to COVID-19. Board members and members of the community, while the COVID-19 pandemic continues, our board meetings will be a mix of what we are doing to support the education of children in the immediate term and what we are doing to improve education in the state in the midterm, long-term. Relative to the immediate, in just a moment, I'll share with you where we are on a variety of issues affecting pre-K-12 education in the pandemic. In the afternoon, Mr. Dave Judd and Ms. Amanda Stoll will discuss the digital divide and the efforts in the state to narrow the divide. Relative to the midterm, long-term, later this morning, Ms. Sheila Alice, Dr. Kiesler, Dr. Scott Kennick-Schneck, and Ms. Kelly Carter will present on one aspect of the state's strategic education plan, the improvement of high school graduation rates. Board, you've heard me note how quickly things change in a pandemic. When we began our March 10th State Board meeting, there were no publicly confirmed COVID-19 positive cases. By the end of the meeting, there were two. Two days later, on March 12th, the governor closed schools in the state for in-person instruction, initially for three weeks, subsequently for the rest of the year. The governor's leadership has surely saved many lives in the state in the last half year. When I updated the board four weeks ago at your State Board meeting, we had just passed 20 million cases worldwide, according to the Johns Hopkins Coronavirus Map. Yesterday, we passed 27 million cases, an increase of 7 million cases, or 35% in four weeks. Four weeks ago, we had had 734,000 deaths worldwide. Yesterday, we had had more than 890,000 deaths worldwide, an increase of 156,000 deaths, or 21% in four weeks. Four weeks ago nationally, we had had just over 5 million cases. By yesterday, we had had 6.3 million cases, an increase of approximately 26% in the country. Four weeks ago nationally, we had had more than 163,000 deaths. By yesterday, that figure had grown to more than 189,000 deaths, an increase of roughly 16% nationally. What a difference Board the last few weeks have made, let alone the last several months across the world. The pandemic has adversely affected virtually all aspects of our country and most of the world. I'm going to share quickly now on 12 topics related in some way or another to the pandemic. Each of these areas has a great deal of underlying detail. We're happy to answer questions if there are on any of these topics. The first is food. The governor announced school closures, as I noted, on March 12th, late in the day. The next day, MDE began a series of webinars premised on approval of a range of waiver requests submitted to the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, to feed children differently than we had typically during the school year. Once granted, these waivers permitted us to provide parents with food for their children outside of school, to provide seven days of meals per week rather than five days, to permit parent pickup of meals at a single school rather than at each of their children's schools, and to permit free meals for children at all schools rather than simply at those with particular free or reduced-price lunch eligibility. For the first five months of the pandemic, USDA was our example of an especially helpful federal agency. This changed last month when the USDA secretary indicated that he would constrain the waivers that he would approve for this school year. In so doing, he indicated that he was unable to extend waivers that he had granted last year, even though nothing had changed statutorily in the interim. Thanks to the leadership of Senator Stabenow, State Board President Albridge, a coalition of national organizations and some statewide associations, eight days ago, the USDA secretary announced his extension of last school year's waivers through the end of the calendar year, through December 31st. Many of us are urging him to extend those waivers through the end of the school year. They will be necessary. The MSU Epic Study. On August 28th, Epic at MSU, in collaboration with the department, released an analysis of the more than 800 local education agency return-to-learn plans in the state, plans that had been approved by local school boards or public school academy boards. In pertinent part, this study noted that 86% of the LEAs in the state, traditional school districts or public school academies, were planning to offer at least some in-person instruction in this school year. Of the 86%, 59% were planning to offer five-day-a-week in-person instruction, while the other 27% were planning to offer two-to-three-day-a-week in-person instruction. Board, as I've shared with you before, simply because a district is offering in-person instruction doesn't mean that all children will go to school in person. We know that many families will choose remote options in these districts. Similarly, simply because a district plans to educate most of its students largely at a distance, either with or without technology, doesn't preclude some small groups of particularly educationally vulnerable children, profound special needs children, beginning English language learners, and fledgling readers, for example, from having in-person options in these districts. In short, in a pandemic, choice of in-person versus remote is especially important to families which have a range of needs and interests for the education of their children. Return-to-learn laws. In August, the state legislature approved and the governor signed into law three return-to-learn laws currently, or now public acts, 147, 48, and 49, which included LEA requirements to create educational goals for the 2021 school year, to describe how instruction will take place under the plan, to describe how equitable access to technology within the district will be provided, to describe how students with disabilities will be provided with equitable access to instruction, and to work with local health departments on the creation of appropriate methods for delivering pupil instruction, given the particular COVID-19 metrics in the district. Each district must establish goals on or before September 15th in a so-called extended COVID-19 learning plan, which must be approved on or before October 1, either by the ISD or the Public School Academy Board of Directors, whichever is applicable. Every 30 days after the initial approval, the local board or board of directors must confirm or amend its plan about how instruction is going to be delivered in the district or PSA. The digital divide. Many districts have worked hard to close the digital divide relative to devices, and some have worked to close the digital divide relative to connectivity as well. As previously mentioned, this issue will be the subject of presentation by Mr. Judd and Ms. Stoll this afternoon, who will talk about how districts across the state and others of us across the state have helped to narrow this divide, not to close it, but to narrow it. CARES Act/ESER funding. Congress has passed and the president has signed into law four coronavirus relief acts. The third of these four, the CARES Act, is the largest, the only one of which contains significant pre-K-12 funding. Nationally, the CARES Act contains $13.2 billion for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, the so-called ESER Fund. Michigan receives $390 million of these funds. The federal CARES Act requires at least 90% of these funds to be distributed to districts or PSAs by Title I Part A formula for any of 12 purposes, including addressing the digital divide. Board, as you are aware, we are using $37 million as an educational equity fund for which districts and PSAs may compete based on need with the express purpose of addressing digital divide or mental health challenges within their school communities. Again, this afternoon's presentation will discuss this area more fully. However, I couldn't treat the next topic of legal action without this reminder or lead-in. Equitable services lawsuits. As the board is aware, there are pending lawsuits regarding how the U.S. Secretary of Education guided local education agencies to distribute ESER funds to non-public schools. Rather than using the plain language of the CARES Act, which states that the non-public schools should receive so-called equitable services "in the same manner" as the Title I Part A formula, the secretary instead shows a different formula for her April 29th guidance and her July 1st interim final rule. Three lawsuits, including one brought by Michigan Attorney General Dana Nessel and her California counterpart Attorney General Bursera, have been subject of court rulings to date. One in Washington State, ours in Northern California, and one in Washington, D.C., late Friday. In the first two, the judges issued preliminary injunctions in joining the U.S. Secretary and the U.S. Department of Education from moving forward with the different formula noted earlier in the April 29th guidance in the July 1 interim final rule. In the Washington, D.C. District Court case, the judge Friday issued a summary judgment motion to join the U.S. Secretary and the U.S. Department of Education more permanently and across the country. If there is no appeal of this decision, the case is won. In Michigan, that would mean that an additional $16 million that would otherwise have wrongly gone to non-public schools would stay where Congress intended it to stay, with public schools. We'll keep the board, our local school districts and the community apprised of whether or not the U.S. Secretary of Education, U.S. Department of Education file an appeal, in this case, to the U.S. Circuit Court, or whether, after three decisions contrary to the U.S. Secretary's action, if they finally get the idea, and simply implement what Congress intended it to implement in the CARES Act. State Summit of Assessments. As the board recalls, on June 30th, State Board President Albridge and I filed requests for 2021 waivers from federal law associated with our State Summit of Assessments, MSTEP, MME, and MI Access. Last week, the Michigan, the U.S. Secretary of Education indicated that she would be denying the waiver requests of those states that had filed them. This isn't particularly surprising. While our waiver requests for last year's state tests were approved in March, we were under no illusion that they were likely to be approved this summer or fall for this year. We will reapply for the waivers in the summer. Ventilation Systems. We've had two meetings with Michigan ASHRAE, the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, and one with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services on ventilation systems. Appreciate our Deputy Superintendent Kyle Garant working on this issue. Thanks to Dr. Pugh for her advocacy on this particular issue. Physical Education. To help provide more physical education opportunities in the pandemic, the department is partnering with the University of Michigan, Go Blue, MEMSPA, the Michigan Elementary and Middle School Principals Association, the Middle School Health Coordinators Association, the Society of Health and Physical Educators, Michigan Public Health Institute, and Playworks to make available what is called interrupted prolonged sitting at home, Impact at Home, a series of exercise videos for children. These 20-minute videos are being developed and edited at U of M for free use statewide. We appreciate Dr. Pugh's sharing of this partnership opportunity and anticipate more discussion about it this fall. MDE Guidance Documents. In the last six months, since the beginning of the pandemic in Michigan, MDE has issued more than 100 guidance documents on a wide range of topics, from learning at a distance to literacy, from special education to social and emotional learning, from childcare to career and technical education to certification, from evaluation to accountability, from early childhood education to early middle college. These documents have been distributed to districts across the state and are available on our website. We have appreciated the partnership with the Office of the Governor, with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, with the Attorney General's Office, with Laura, and with many other of our state agencies, as well as our local school districts and intermediate school districts and PSAs as well. It truly has been a group effort during the pandemic. Webinars. The day after the return-to-learn laws were signed into law by the governor, MDE put out two related guidance documents. Last week, MDE began a series of webinars for educators in local school districts and intermediate school districts on subjects related to the return-to-learn laws. I had the opportunity to participate in the full series for the Executive Directors of Education organizations last week. The webinars are very, very strong and will be helpful to drive up quickly the learning curves of local educators on these new parameters. These new parameters are quite a bit different from the parameters to which our educators are used in our local school districts, and we have found that these webinars are extremely supportive to our local educators. And finally, a note on school funding. Four months ago, Board, you approved a resolution to urge local school boards and others to lobby Congress to provide more resources for public schools to, one, provide PPE, two, make up for lost state resources in the pandemic, and, three, to address catch-up growth for our students. The good news is that many heard and heeded your call. That's the good news. The bad news is that Congress has yet to pass a fifth coronavirus bill into law. Congress is late, has been, and continues to be. It needs to act now. Through our financial situation, we recognize that in the absence of federal dollars, our children and families are going to be adversely affected. Though our financial situation isn't as troubled as it was in May, it requires federal action to stabilize services to our kids and their families. We call on Congress to act urgently, as if services to children and families, not simply in the coming year, but in the coming years, depend on it, because they do. Thank you. We're open to comments and questions from State Board members at this time. Comments and questions from State Board members? Even crickets are welcome early in the morning. A stray toad. Okay. Seeing and hearing, no comments or... Well, we have Dr. Pritchett in the house.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I just wanted to thank you for that very comprehensive overview. As we get information in bits and pieces, a memo here, a memo there, an article here, an article there, it's nice to be able to have the comprehensive overlook of everything that the department and the governor's office and has been doing throughout this time since March 13th. So I appreciate that. I don't have any specific questions except one, and that is on the grant applications that MDE is making available. I think it's the $37 million one. I get the acronyms mixed up. I am wondering how many districts to date have started to apply for those, or do you have that information?
You know what? That number moves daily. We have our Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations with us, Kyle Garant. Mr. Garant, do you, by any chance, have a number for us on the number of districts that have applied for educational equity funds, the competitive funds?
Yes, I do. Good morning, everyone. So far today, this was as of last Friday, we had 60 applications submitted and another 502 that have been started but haven't been submitted yet.
So there is, so to that point, there is substantial interest in these educational equity dollars. Good to know. Thank you, Mr. Garant. Other questions or comments? We have Ms. Fecto and Dr. Pugh.
Hi, I just, if we don't have the waivers on the testing, who actually pays for that and how much does that cost for the test?
So I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Kiesler. The easy answer to that is some of that is a fixed cost, some of that is a variable cost, but here to tell you in more elaborate detail is Deputy Superintendent Dr. Vanessa Kiesler. Dr. Kiesler?
Good morning. As Dr. Rice said, the, so the short answer of who pays for the assessments is us. There's state aid dollars for it as well as federal dollars for it. The exact cost of the assessments, I never like to just throw that out because it moves around, and this year has especially been weird with last year not costing anything and being unclear, or, you know, not costing as much because we didn't do a full administration. So we will get you the precise number. I don't want to, it's a number that can stick with you if you don't have it exactly right, but it is money in the state aid budget and federal money that funds these assessments.
So Ms. Fecto, just to note that in some cases, we are paying for item development, which is a sunk cost irrespective of whether we administer the exams or not, and then some is the cost of test administration. So that would be, so the latter, the former is foregone, the latter doesn't end up going out the door when we're able to have State Summit of Assessments waived.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pugh?
Thank you, Dr. Kiesler.
I'll take myself off of you. Good morning, and thank you for that in-depth report with Dr. Pritchett. And if we could actually get the, that summary, that'd be great. I know you've kept us apprised of all that information, but to have it all listed, that would be good. And so a lot of work going on. Just a reminder, you know, a lot of our schools are starting today, so of course, we're mindful of that as we're meeting in the safety of our, well, I'm in my home office. So just thoughtful of the educators and the parents who are out there, you know, fearful of what this first day will bring on top of the normal fears of a first day of school. So thoughts and prayers are with them. And then I'm looking at the statistics, which still show, you know, in our communities of color, African-American in particular, here in Michigan, six times the age-adjusted rates more likely to die of COVID than white residents here in Michigan. And then our children nationally, three times more likely, or five times for African-Americans more likely to have adverse effects if they do contract COVID, and for our Hispanic-Latino children, eight times. So that's just on my mind as a public health person who is a member of the State Board of Education. I'm really happy to hear about the ventilation, and I know Brandy talked about, you know, making sure that the water is moving in some of the, in the buildings that have remained dormant for this long period of time. I would like to know, how are we going to monitor that to make sure that those, that these environmental concerns are being taken into consideration, especially in a lot of these buildings that, you know, we have been begging for this type of attention for so long, but now when we have pathogens that are in, you know, a virus that's among us, we know that that's even more important. So I just want to know, you know, how are we going to monitor that? And then also, Dr. Rice, I've talked to you about making, about getting this on the agenda and maybe getting like the Coalition for Healthier Schools Network and that list that they have, that we can have a presentation here so we know that ASHRAE and others are available to schools to help schools work through these issues. And then, as it relates to Impact at Home, again, that was a very proactive discussion that we started back in May, that Dr. Rebecca Hassan from University of Michigan was able to really pull it together. And we have folks from, we have actually the Detroit Lions, the Detroit Pistons, and others who have teamed up with us and would love to be able to do a presentation because we want parents and educators to know that that was a very novel partnership that came together, thinking about how can we provide safe alternatives to getting our children to move. We know that that's good for their mental health as well as their physical health, and so would love to have that as a presentation. So I'll bring that up at the end of the meeting, but I just wanted to note that here, just in case I have to drop off towards the end. But thank you all. It's a lot that's going on, and we'll just continue to keep pushing harder as we learn more about the science and we know better ways to protect our children and make sure that we're protecting their mental as well as their physical health first. and make sure that we're protecting their mental as well as their physical health first. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. You should know, spoke with Mr. Garant earlier today, there is a memo that is closed out the door, a guidance memo that includes support from MDHHS as well as ASHRAE on the issue of indoor air and indoor water as well. So there is movement in this important area. Thank you.
And Dr. Rice, you know, I'll make sure that, I've sent it to you before, but there's a really, that whole pandemic, schools versus pandemic. So then it lists all of the things that we can be looking at. And I think that we've got them all, but you know, the physical distance as well as the ventilation, as well as the plumbing issues. But I'll make sure that I send that over just so that we're looking at it all comprehensively. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Other reflections from board members? Reflections from board members? Going once and twice? And thrice? And we're moving on.
Dr. Rice, I do have one more question that I just have to get out there. Have we thought about, what are we saying to the public? If we're here meeting and children and educators are in school building, what's the thought to that?
Well, I think there are a number of thoughts. I think we can do this meeting well at a distance. It's perhaps not as good as an in-person meeting from my vantage point, but it's pretty good. We've managed to figure out how to do meetings remotely. School as a rule benefits from in-person interactions, particularly for our most educationally vulnerable, not our most medically vulnerable, but our most educationally vulnerable. Those young people who have severe special needs, for example, beginning English language learners, fledgling readers, they benefit from those in-person interactions. I might add, I think every student does, but particularly those who are educationally vulnerable. And I think, so I think that's one thing that we share. I think the second thing that we share is it's a choice and it's not going to be the choice for everyone. I may choose to keep my children at home either because my children or I have, my wife has pre-existing medical conditions or simply because I'm fearful. Alternatively, other people may make a different choice to send their children to school. So I think that's another thing that I share, that I think choice is important at this moment. I don't think it's so much a question of we're protected and they aren't, but rather, education is best done in schools if we're able to accomplish that for different groups of young people, number one, in different communities, number two, assuming that parents and children and educators are comfortable with that, number three. So I think it's really a gestalt of things that I would share with parents and others. Parents are going to make different decisions for their children. I respect all decisions, but I don't think that we should necessarily, when we're in phase four or phase five, make those decisions for children. When the governor says we're in phase three or below, that's a different story and we're all at home. But phase four or above, there ought to be choices for our parents and for our children. Any other questions or comments, thoughts, or reflections? Going once, twice, and gone. Okay. The next agenda item, board members, is a presentation on Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. This is, as I said earlier, is a reflection of midterm, long-term, how we get our heads up and look at not so much where we are in the moment, but where we're looking to go to midterm, long-term. This presentation is an overview of the newly adopted Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, an introduction of the new brand for the Top 10 Plan, metrics data for the goal to improve high school graduation rates for four, five, and six years for all students and all groups of students and the Michigan Department of Education contributions to support the goal to improve graduation rates. Following this presentation, we will engage in conversation with the board about increasing high school graduation rates for Michigan students. This is an informational presentation. It does not require board action. Presenters are Ms. Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent, and Ms. Kelly Siciliano Carter, Director of Strategic Planning and Implementation. There will be a PowerPoint presentation and we estimate that this presentation with Q and A will go between an hour and an hour and a half. Ladies, good morning.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, everyone. Before we begin today's presentation on Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, I would like to express our appreciation to the State Board of Education members for their involvement the past 10 months in the development and the eventual approval of the revised Top 10 Plan. We truly appreciate your participation in the one-on-one interviews on what should be included in the revised plan, the time spent during your monthly meetings for presentations on potential components of the plan, and your thoughtful and really rich discussions on guiding principles, goals, and metrics. We realize that this has been a long journey and we want to recognize your commitment and your collaborative and collective efforts on revision process, which led to approval of a new strategic education plan for Michigan that occurred during your August meeting. I would also like to recognize Dr. Rice for his leadership and guidance throughout the review and revision process. It was Dr. Rice's vision to use the continuous improvement process to revise the original Top 10 and 10 Plan so that it is streamlined, clear and concise, includes current and relevant language, is directional and aspirational, and is focused on goals and metrics. Thank you, Dr. Rice, for leading and guiding us through this 10-month journey. We are excited about the focused direction Michigan's new Top 10 Strategic Education Plan will provide to the educational community and other key stakeholders in our state. While there is still much work that we need to do to communicate the plan, to bring it to life and to make it operational, we do envision that the new plan will be used to inform decisions and influence actions to support the education of the children in our state. Our Top 10 presentation this morning has two components to it. One is to share the newly developed communication plan with an emphasis on the next three months. And the second topic is to share metrics for one of the eight goals, as Dr. Rice mentioned, and that goal is to increase the percentage of students who graduate from high school. And to share the communication plan, I'm going to turn the presentation to Mrs. Carter.
Thank you. So now the exciting work begins, the implementation of the Top 10 Strategic Plan. So an essential piece of the implementation plan is the creation of a robust communication strategy. As Mrs. Alice mentioned, one of our first actions was to rebrand the logo and the look of the plan. And we're unveiling to that to you momentarily, which is very exciting. Part of an effective communication strategy is identifying the audiences, the messages, and the tools. So within MDE, we have developed a strategy that outlines all of these components. So for sake of time and interest, I'm just going to highlight the tools that we have selected for our short-term communications focus. Over the next three months, we have committed to having the website revamped. We were developing a one-pager that provides plan highlights that can be used by MDE, educational organizations, and any partners who need anything that can help them to discuss and showcase the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. We're also developing a larger electronic booklet that will include all of the planned components, including the metrics. And we're going to be reaching out to educational organizations and asking to be part of their meetings and included into their conferences so we can talk about the Top 10 Plan and suggest ways that they can contribute to the plan. We're also holding internal staff meetings within MDE to discuss how the office can connect to the plan and how they can contribute to supporting districts. Additionally, we are developing a universal PowerPoint that'll be available to anyone who would like to share information on the plan. So this is just a short overview of some of the short-term focuses that we have over the next zero to three months. But we're also working on a long-term plan, which will be the next six months and moving forward. So now I'm excited to share the new Top 10 logo and the new branding, which everyone is seeing for the very first time. Here we are. The logo was designed to keep a slight connection to the previous plan, which is why you see the more abstract road going through the middle of the text. The colors complement the previous plan but are updated. And we thought it was critical that we keep kids in the forefront. And that's why you see that there's this little boy reading on the ledge. And we believe this is so important that we don't forget that this is the important work that we're doing and that's why it's a key component of the logo. I'd also like to point out on the bottom of the slide, it's part of the new branding. And that's where you see this landscape that showcases all of Michigan's children from urban to suburban to rural. So that completes my portion of the communications. And I'm going to pass the presentation back to Mrs. Alice. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, for leading the efforts to develop the Top 10 Communication Plan and to coordinate with Mr. Martin Ackley, the Director of the Office of Political and Governmental Affairs, on moving it forward the next three months. We're really excited about the new logo and brand for the Top 10 Plan, which Kelly just unveiled this morning. And so now you're going to see this logo being used in our future communication efforts. The new Top 10 Strategic Education Plan includes eight goals that you see on the slide. I think these goals are easy to remember if you think about them in chunks. So two of them talk about expanding opportunities for students, expand early childhood learning opportunities and expand secondary learning opportunities for all students. Two of them focus on improving, improving early literacy achievement and improving the health, safety, and wellness of all learners. Three of them mention increasing percentages of numbers, increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school, increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential, and increase the number of certified teachers in the areas of shortage. And finally, one goal indicates the need to provide adequate and equitable school funding. Moving on to our second topic this morning, metrics. The first goal that we've selected to share metrics with you is increase the percentage of students who graduate from high school. This morning, we're going to present five years of graduation percentages for students who graduated in four years, five years, and in six years. The metrics will include data for all students as well as gender, race, ethnicity, economically disadvantaged as compared to non-economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities as compared to students without disabilities, and English language learner students as compared to non-English learner students. As we talk about graduation rates and we talk about efforts to increase those percentages, it's important for us to remember that increasing the number of students who graduate from high school doesn't begin in high school, rather, those efforts begin at a young age and continue through adolescence. It is our responsibility to ensure that every child has a wide range of opportunities and supports needed to successfully complete high school and graduate. But for today's presentation, we're going to focus on efforts at the secondary level. And to share the data, I will turn the presentation to Dr. Vanessa Kiesler and to Dr. Scott Kennischeck.
Good morning. So to briefly walk you through the graduation rate data, this is for all students. And I'm just going to explain this chart a little bit. And then the rest of the charts look very similar, so you'll be able to follow along. If you look from left to right on your screen, we start with the graduation rates for 2015 and move to 2019. So we have a five-year trend that you can see. And then the last column on the right, the four-year percentage point change, is the change in that rate between 2019 and 2015. And then you'll see different cohorts, a four-year, a five-year, and a six-year. Michigan has, for a number of years now, tracked graduation rates by these different cohorts. So what that means is we know the rate for four-year graduations, students who complete high school in four years, but we also track and give credit for students who complete in five years or in six years. Some of our students' educational programs at the secondary level take longer than four years. And so those students still graduate and are still counted in the graduation rate, but they show up in either the five-year or the six-year. So when you look at the data, you can see for all students, we have, we've been seeing an increase across all three types of cohort years, four-year, five-year, and six-year rates. We are at 81.41 in 2019 for the four-year and then close to 84% for both the five-year and the six-year. And that is a positive percentage point increase, especially at the six-year level. But all three are important and really that these are all students, these are hard metrics to move. So this type of a change is a really important change to reflect on and to give Michigan educators and students credit for. Next slide. Here are the rates. As Ms. Alice said, we, the commitment in the 10 and 10 is to break the rates out by a variety of different subgroups. So here are the rates for gender. Females are on the first part of the chart and then males are the second part. Again, you can see that there's been an increase in rates, four-year, five-year, and six-year rates for both females and males. Females are at about 85, almost 85% in 2019 for the four-year rate and then 87% for the five- and six-year rate, while males are at the 78% for the four-year rate and then a little over 80 for the five- and six-year rates. You'll note that the rate of increase for males is greater than the rate of increase for females, but also there is that gap between the genders. And this is reflected in national data as well, that there seems to be, males have a lower graduation rate in general than females. Moving into race, ethnicity, we have listed the various racial, ethnic groups here alphabetically. So starting with our Asian student subgroup, you'll note that the rates are, again, looking in 2019, the rates stand at almost 92% for the four-year rate and then 93.5 for five-year and a little, almost 93% for six-year. And that there's been increases over time. The next chunk of the chart is our Black or African-American students. You'll note that there has been significant increases in the four-year percentage point change, particularly in those, well, really in all rates and they're even larger in the five and the six-year. And they stand at 70% for the four-year, almost 70, a little over 73%, between 73% and 74% for the five and the six-year. Next. Our next group is our Hispanic or Latino student subgroup. Again, you can see those rates standing at 76% in 2019 for the four-year rate, a little bit higher for both the five and the six-year. And again, that large percentage point change for this subgroup over time. Our next subgroup is the Native American or Alaskan Native. Those rates are 70% for the four-year and 74, 72 for the five and the six-year. That's, this is one of the few places where we've seen a slight decline over the last five years in the four-year rate, but then you see a pretty significant increase in the five and the six-year rate. And also just noting, this subgroup and the next one are two of our smaller subgroups. So they're a little bit more, they're impacted a little bit more by fewer students make bigger changes in the rates. They move around more easily than some of our larger subgroups. Next. Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander. Again, we've seen rates going up. We're at 80% in the four-year and then almost 89% in the five-year and 87% in the six-year. And those represent very large percentage point increases over the last five years. and those represent very large percentage point increases over the last five years. When we look at two or more races, so students who report themselves as being in two or more race categories, we are at about 76% for the four-year rate, and then a little over 78, almost 79% for five and six-year. And there's an increase in the four-year, very minor decreases in the five and the six-year over the last five years. And then finally, in the white student subgroup, we see that there has been percentage point increases of approximately 1.17, 1.14, and the rates stand really near 85%, so a little bit under 84.65 for the four-year rate, and then 86.89 and 87.18 for the five and the six-year rates. Oh, sorry, I was one slide early. So for our economically disadvantaged students, we have, again, made a lot of progress as a state. When you look at that top chart, it's students who are considered economically disadvantaged. And while that rate, the four-year rate is at 70.77, and then the five and the six-year rates are a little higher, while those need to continue to climb, we also see that there's been really large percentage point increases over the last five years. And then the second chart is a little more confusing. These are students who are not economically disadvantaged. We, as a state, only began calculating that group's rate specifically, so flagging the student as not economically disadvantaged and then doing the rate calculation in their appropriate cohort in the 2018 rate. So we don't have those numbers before 2018. We do have them for 2018 and 2019, and we can see modest increases for the not economically disadvantaged students as well. For our English learners, again, you see, over time, the graduation rates are going up. We're at 73% for the four-year rate and then closer to 77, 78 for the five- and six-year rates. And then the bottom of this chart, similar to the previous one, not English learners, we've calculated those rates as a state specifically, starting with the 2018 graduation year. And those are 81.79 for the four-year rate and 84 for the five and the six, and there's moderate increases between those two years as well. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kennischeck.
Thank you, Vanessa. So going through the graph much like Vanessa has been doing, this is the chart that shows our students with disabilities, again, four-, five-, and six-year cohorts. When we talk about reporting for the path forward, those bottom numbers, the six-year cohorts, are numbers that you have seen. And so they shouldn't be foreign to you, as we've been reporting on them for a couple of years now, as we're trying to really increase the graduation rate for our students with disabilities. But again, laid out via four-, five-, and six-year cohorts for our students with disabilities. To Dr. Kiesler's point, below that is data regarding students without disabilities. You will see some NAs, and that is because CEPI hadn't been tracking that until 2018 or 2019. And so we do now have that data in terms of comparing our students with disabilities to students without disabilities. Again, you can see the numbers there via four-year, five-year, and six-year cohort. So in terms of efforts of what we're doing to try to increase or improve high school graduation rates, there are a number of things that we are embarking on. We are providing a repository for district contributions of best practices. We know there are districts who are doing this very well, and so we want to provide a repository for districts to share what they're doing. We will be convening educators to share best practices. That may look a little different in our COVID area than where it may have last year, but we really want to bring people together again to share the best practices. So some type of online repository, as well as actually bringing folks together. We will be creating and sharing written documents about those best practices and then offering additional supports as requested. Specific to special education or students with disabilities, well, kind of specific to our students with disabilities, but also all kids. Again, we've reported and shared information with you as a board on the path forward. You know that this is an all-ed, all-hands-on-deck approach to improving student outcomes, including our graduation rates for our students with disabilities. So in terms of tangible initiatives or efforts, we have formed a partnership with MAISA, where they have formed what they call the Special Education Instructional Leadership Network. It is a network of ISD special education directors, and we are embarking on a number of things to work together on, one being, very recently, work around preschool inclusion. We know we don't have the horsepower at the department to create the change, the level of change that's needed, so we're partnering with MAISA and the Special Education Instructional Leadership Network to really help with that in terms of boots on the ground. We also know, as part of the path forward, there is a heavy focus on inclusion in quality Tier One instruction. We know 80% of our students with disabilities get 80% of their instruction in that general ed classroom. And so we really want to work not only with special educators, but with general educators as well, shoring up their quality Tier One instruction. And the last two bullet points really are initiatives and efforts that are good for all kids. Part of the Path Forward work is encouraging districts to adopt what we call E-WIMS, which are early warning intervention and monitoring systems. And so start tracking in a positive way our students when they come into high school, perhaps, perhaps middle school, in terms of their success or lack thereof, and not wait for them to fail any longer or anymore. So implementing these early warning systems to help educators adjust instruction, to help students earn those credits to graduate. And then the last piece, again, is the personal curriculum. Again, that's available to all students. That is not specific to students with disabilities. And so from a special education point of view, a mix of initiatives that we are undertaking to help improve high school graduation rates.
And to round out the additional contributions to improve high school graduation rates, the board will be familiar with these strategies, because they're also things that we reflect in the top 10 plan. But these career technical education, early middle colleges, dual enrollment, advanced placement, and international baccalaureate are all opportunities for students to engage with learning during their, particularly during their secondary school career, to engage with that learning in different ways, and help them start to envision or take steps toward their post-secondary life. So those are, while they're strategies that are good unto themselves, we also see them as something that helps improve those high school graduation rates by helping kids be more attached to school and see a path through their high school years and beyond. And with that, we are at the end of our presentation, so we'll turn it back to Dr. Rice and Chief Deputy Ellis.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Ellis, Dr. Kiesler, Dr. Kennischeck, Ms. Carter. Board members, questions or comments? Dr. Albridge, would you like to share what you put in the chat so that everybody has the benefit of that knowledge?
Sure. And I also have another question that I want to ask as well. I was a little confused with the data regarding the four-, five-, and six-year graduation rates, because I was assuming it was all the same cohort. And if you notice, in like 2015 and 2016, the numbers actually go down for the six-year graduation rate, which I have since learned that it's actually not all one cohort, that it's based on the year as opposed to the cohort of students. So if you were supposed to graduate in 2015 and you actually graduated in six years, then you are included in the 2017 numbers, not the 2015 numbers. So that was helpful to understand. But it's still, it still is, looked a little confusing, particularly at the end when we're adding up all of the numbers, and it looks like the six-year graduation rates is going much larger than the four- and five-year, but it's based on previous data. So that was that question that I was asking. As far as my other question is concerned, I think the logo looks really good, but I'm kind of surprised we kept the top 10 label, because I know we've had conversations about top 10 in relation to what? What are we measuring the top 10 against? And the only thing I'm aware of is like NAEP scores that we might be looking at. So that was just my question, is if we're keeping that top 10, what exactly is it that we are trying to be the top 10 of?
Sure. So let me share a couple of reflections, and then perhaps Sheila has a reflection or two as well. There are a number of our goals that have national metrics. You note early childhood education, where there is a ranking of state early childhood programs across the country, and we're one of three with the highest ranking. You point out NAEP, that, of course, is another example. Some of our other metrics are able to be compared nationally. Graduation rates are an example. Post-secondary credential rates are an example. I don't think it's so much, though, a strict comparison as it is an aspiration to aspire to higher, to aspire to improve upon what we have. So I would say that most of the metrics have some sort of national comparison. The early childhood, the early literacy, some, not all, of the health, safety, and wellness, the secondary school programming, the graduation rates, the post-secondary credentials. And then the only thing that I would also share is that school finance, the adequacy and the equity of school funding have national comparisons as well. I don't want to get overly fixated on the top 10 piece. I do want to push toward progress, and I do think that there's a value to periodically reflecting upon where we are at particular junctures, on particular goals. It's the logic of this presentation, for example, it's the logic of the subsequent presentations as well. But I'm not overly taken by names or color schemes or anything. I'm a little bit, we've had some conversation about this, you and I, and the board as well. And if the board has another way of characterizing that, I think that that's fine. Other questions or comments? I see a couple of hands, but none raised. Tom puts his in his lap real quickly, so that he doesn't get called on. Ms. Fecto.
Okay. So following up on what Cassandra just said, so with our graduation rates, what is the national average for these? Are we looking at the subgroups? Are we looking at the average and comparing to that?
Yeah. So the national average is a few percentage points higher than ours. We've been growing, but the national graduation rate has grown as well. Vanessa, do you have anything to share on national graduation rates today?
I don't have much more than you just shared. I actually tried to go look up more specific data, but the feds are far behind in their reporting. So the most recent data, it goes back to 2017 that you can find. So kind of surprisingly, they're lagging even further behind us. So in 2017, it's like Dr. Rice said, they're a couple points above us, but they need to post their more recent data. We're sending it to them, but it's not coming up, it's not on their websites yet, so.
Oh, and here comes Sammy. Excuse me.
Is that Gabriel?
Yes, it's Gabriel. I gotta go. Sorry. I'm home alone with Sam here. So I had another question. I was looking at the students with disabilities in particular, because their rates are the lowest. So are we looking at, is there a way to cross-reference to see like the different subgroups? So African-American children with disabilities, English-language learners with disabilities. I'm just wondering if there's ways to delve a little bit deeper to find if there's interventions that might be more, you know, focused on the groups that are, in particular, having the hardest time to bring up that lower average? Because my guess is that if you are economically disadvantaged or an English-language learner and disabled, the rates are going to be significantly lower. So if there's a way to distinguish where those really, where there's the most struggle, devise ways to actually get programming into those areas where they're the most needed? Is that something that is being looked at or could be considered?
Dr. Kiesler, cross tabs?
Yes. Cross tabs are available. They, we are not, they're not in this, obviously, they're not in this presentation at this point. And you are right, Michelle, when you cross these different groups, or Ms. Fecto, sorry, when you cross these different groups, you do see further variations, further, you know, kids' rates going lower, rates going higher. My School Data allows you to do these cross tabs in real time, if you're familiar with My School Data. We could also, I think, prepare, you know, download some of that, prepare a report for the board if they would like that.
I would like that. Thank you.
But I think, Ms. Fecto, to your point, you're talking about the accumulation of challenges for individual young people, and you see this a lot. You'll notice that girls outperform boys. That's not just a Michigan phenomenon, that's a national phenomenon. You'll notice that non-economically disadvantaged students outperform economically disadvantaged students. You know, it's a function of the relative challenges of the one group versus the other group of foreign working-class children relative to middle-class children. It's not to say that there aren't middle-class children that outperform middle-class kids, there certainly are, there are large numbers of them. But on average, poverty adversely affects school performance for a variety of reasons, and the same is true with all of these categories. Our data, in some ways, mimic national data, and in other ways, somewhat less so. I do think the value of looking at the national data helps us discern what the art of the possible is when we see a state that's doing markedly better with its special needs children. What are they doing that we need to mimic? What are they doing that we need to emulate? The same is true with children of color, the same is true with economically disadvantaged children. We ought to be about this look up about best practices on a regular basis, looking at who's doing better than we and how they're accomplishing this. Some of this is a function of resource. But the resources are not simply financial. Financial resources are a big deal, yes, but time, attention, focus, energy are also resources as well. And we have to be providing those resources also. Financial, I'll never walk away from the fact that we underfund public education in Michigan. But I think the funding is not simply about dollars, but it's also about time, energy, attention, and focus as well. Más preguntas, other questions? Questions, comments, concerns, fears? Phobias, neuroses, going once and twice and thrice? It is 10:48, and I think it is about time, given how quickly we've moved through our morning agenda, I think it's about time for an extensive State Board President's Report. President Albridge.
Is that lingo for expand? Which I will do my best, but it will not be a long president's report. First of all, if you're not aware to the board members, the NASB upcoming meeting is October 11. is October 20th through the 23rd. And at this point, they're assuming that those days will be about 1:00 to 6:00 PM Eastern Time. And on October 23rd, they will actually be doing the business portion of the meeting. And so one of the things that we're going to have to do at our next meeting is decide who our voting delegate is. Normally that would be our NASB representative, but we don't know, I don't know yet if Tiffany is planning to attend the meeting or not. So first of all, if you are planning to attend this meeting, could you please let Murch know so that we can have an adequate count of who's going to be attending the NASB meeting? And then we can decide, depending on who is attending and not attending, who can serve in that role as the voting delegate for the state, assuming whether or not Tiffany is available for that or not. We also know that we will get candidate materials on September 16th, but they will not look like we've had in the past. There will be no director elections this year. If you recall, the NASB board voted in 2018 to begin the process of eliminating one of each of the area director positions so that they could create a smaller board on NASB. And as a result, there will be no area elections this year, and there will also be no bylaw changes this year. So what we do know is at this time, there are two candidates for chair-elect, but the nominations committee has not met yet. They will meet and decide on whether or not to move one or both of them forward. So at the next meeting, we'll definitely want to have someone lined up on our behalf to serve as a voting delegate in the case that they move two of the candidates forward, and we need to decide who's going to be the, the chair-elect of NASB. So again, if you are planning to attend or if you would like to attend, please let Murch know as soon as possible so we can have that conversation at our next board meeting. My, the rest of my report, a lot of that, the superintendent has already touched on. This is the first day of school for many of our students. So welcome back to school for those that it is the first day. For others, they've been back for a week or two. So I hope all is going well with that. We are grateful to the USDA for extending the waivers that we requested that will allow us to provide continued private flexibility in how we serve students who need food service. And then I just wanted to register my disappointment in some of the decisions that are coming out of the U.S. Department of Education, specifically under the leadership of Secretary DeVos. The testing waiver, I think we, we definitely need to continue to hound on that because we are still in the middle of a pandemic. And even though we have 86% of our schools that are having some form of in-person learning, the reality is that there are a lot of students who are doing virtual and remote learning and taking standardized tests in a situation like that is not an ideal situation and really can't glean a whole lot of information from that. So that unfortunately is the extent of my president's report. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albridge. I appreciate that. We'll, we'll move in this somewhat staccato meeting, and I do apologize for that, but that's what happens when you're ruthlessly efficient as you are, board. We'll move to meeting minute approvals and we'll move through those meeting minute approvals one by one. I think there is a value to this, given people's busy days. We want to make sure that we have a quorum to approve. So may I please have a motion to approve the record of the special meeting of July 30th, 2020?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you could take a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Muted.
McMillan?
Still muted.
McMillan?
Looks like I might be having technical difficulties.
I'll come back. I'll come back.
No, no, I think.
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly, absent. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve the record of the special meeting of August 4th, 2020? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, roll call vote, please.
Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly absent. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of August 11th, 2020?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Sounded like a jump ball. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you could take a roll call vote, please.
Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly absent. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And finally, if we could do the approval, the State Board of Education meeting schedule for 2021. State Board Executive Marilyn Schneider has proposed a meeting schedule for 2021. The regular meetings are scheduled for the second Tuesday of each month, and the board's advance is scheduled for the third Tuesday in May. Board is being asked to approve the 2021 State Board of Education meeting schedule today. It is attached. If I could have a motion, please?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, board.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion associated with the 2021 meeting schedule? Hearing none. All in favor? Nope, let's not do it that way. Hearing none. Marilyn, roll call vote, please.
Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew? Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly absent. Albridge?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And then if we can pivot briefly, we're, we're getting quite a bit of the afternoon work done in the morning, which I don't think is necessarily a bad thing. Board members are busy, so are community members, and so are staff. And if we can shoehorn this into a shorter timeframe, all the, all the better. To the, to the superintendent's report, and I'll just add one or two things to what I said earlier. Most notably, the importance of masking up. If you choose to send your child to school, if you are a teacher in a school that is meeting in person, important that we mask up, important that we, important that we observe the range of mitigation strategies. This is critical, not only to staying healthy in the moment, but also extending the period of time during which in-person instruction can be available in a given school district, in a given region, in the, in the state. The better we do with mitigation strategies, both within this, in the schools and outside of the schools, the longer we'll be able to do what we need to do with, with our schools in person. Really critical that people take the masking up seriously. We've all seen examples of people not taking this seriously. There was a pretty famous video of this that took place in Georgia. And I would hope that across the state, whether you like wearing a mask or not, and most of us aren't, aren't happy about having to wear them, but I would hope that people understand that they are for the purposes of public health. And you wear a mask not for your own health, but rather for others' health. And I think people need to reflect upon that. The only other thing that I would share, unrelated to COVID-19, but related to planning for a future, is, is the issue of a literacy grant, which we were awarded in the last week and a half. It is a federal literacy grant. This is a happy federal moment, members of the board. Not an unhappy federal moment, but a happy federal moment. $16 million, five-year striving, striving readers, comprehensive literacy grant. It's to help us improve our literacy network, number one. It's to help us improve our work with struggling reading communities, struggling socioeconomic, and by extension, struggling literacy communities, number two. This will help broadly with the supports that we provide across the state in literacy, but it will also permit us to do some very focused, concentrated work with five or six districts across the state. And that will be by application to the department. We will be sharing more about this opportunity with the board in the, in the coming months. We'll have Dr. Randy Buggny, who's our literacy manager, share a little bit about the grant with the board, along with Dr. Kiesler and Ms. Alice. But I did want not just the board to hear about it this morning in public session, but I also wanted the community to do so as well. We did send out a press release on it. But as much as we are interested in our press releases, I'm not so sure that everyone reads them as closely as we do. So I wanted the board to be aware of that. Literacy is one of our eight goals. It is arguably the foundational goal. That was Frederick Douglass who once said, "Once you learn to read, you will be forever free." And he was speaking both literally and metaphorically when he said that. So it was true in the 19th century as it is true in the 21st century as well. Literacy is the greatest gift that we can give our children. It is literally the educational gift that keeps on giving, long after we are gone as educators. It is a gift that our young people carry into adulthood and use to help support themselves. So anyway, I share that about the literacy grant. It's an exciting moment for, for Michigan and for MDE, and we look forward to sharing more about that coming forward. We, it is, board, it is 11:02. And under normal circumstances, we would be getting into high gear. But we have just blown through not just the morning's activities, but a good portion of the afternoon's activities. And because one of our presenters for the digital divide is not available immediately, unhappily, we are going to break now, and we are going to come back and do that digital divide presentation for you, if you don't mind, at 11:45. So we'll break for an early lunch, and we'll do digital divide presentation at, at 11:45. Hearing no objections. Take good care. We will see you shortly. Thank you.